The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be given by Jean Emerson, pastor of New Beginning Fellowship.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this evening. Father, we thank you for this city that we love. We ask that your blessing be upon this meeting. Thank you for those who are city elected officials, and we thank you, Father, for those that take care of the things in our city. And we ask that you would be present here at this meeting, that your glory would be seen, and that your wisdom would come forth, and that your blessing would be upon this time. So we thank you for this opportunity, and we ask your peace and blessing over us now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We are blessed this evening to have with us the Dennison High School Stinger Ed officers who are going to lead us in our pledge. And ladies, I know that you have a way of recognizing your, identifying yourself when you're on the field, so here we go. Sergeant Aubrey Means, class of 2024, all right. Sergeant Emerson Williams, class of 2024. Lieutenant Elizabeth Ortiz, class of 2022. Lieutenant Lily Robinson, class of 2022. And if I get this right, Captain Chloe Koborowski, all right, class of 2022. Ladies, thank you so much, and you can begin the pledge at your leisure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much, ladies. Before we move on, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce a very special person we have with us tonight and from now on going forward. Our new city manager, Greg Smith. This is his first day on the job, so we are very, very pleased to have him here. And Greg, welcome aboard. All right. Item two, public comments. At this point, in each meeting, we set aside time so that citizens may speak on any action item that is listed on the agenda. In order to speak, you must fill out a speak to request card before, a request to speak card, I should say, before we get to this item. However, I have a number of cards, but they all are related to 4C, which is a public hearing. So I will hold all of your cards until we get to that item on the agenda, and then you will be called on to speak. Each one who filled out a request to speak card.
Ma'am, they told me out front I didn't have to fill out the card that there would be an opening.
And they are absolutely correct, sir. It is a public hearing, and anyone who is here wishing to speak on that agenda item may speak when we get to that agenda item. And I open the public hearing. So thank you, sir. All right. The consent agenda. Item 3E will be removed from the consent agenda, and will be considered at a future council meeting. Now we'll consider the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 3E. Second?
There is a motion by Mayor Prokhem Hander and a second by Councilmember Crawley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and receive testimony from the Neighborhood Services Manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 413 South Eddie Avenue and take action. Mr. Lay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On August 2nd, 2021, Wayne Wilbur Jr., the estate of Wayne Wilbur Jr. and Jason Earl Morgan were given notice of violation to repair, demolish the structure at 413 South Eddie Avenue. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 7, Section 13-154, Designations 13, 14, and 15 of the City of Dennison Code of Ordinances. So the structure was issued notices for minimum property standards to the listed owner on April 26th of this year. We had no contact with the owner. The structure was posted unsafe on June 16th, 2021. The appraised value of the improvement for 2021 was $20,316. The 2020 taxes are currently unpaid. They totaled $1,245.22. There has been no water service at the structure since April 19th, 2018. So the roof structure of this house is poor. It's what caught our eye. The roof, it looks like it could cave in at any time. We were able to gain entry into the house. The structure is not weathered tight. It's not habitable for anyone to live in due to the extensive interior damage. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property on file in the Neighborhood Services Office. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 413 South Eddie, a nuisance and unsafe, to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crawley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and receive testimony from the Neighborhood Services Manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 1813 Mockingbird Lane and take action. Mr. Lay? I lost you. I couldn't find you.
No, sorry. Okay, so on July 30th, 2021, Aileen Pittman, Larry Pittman, and F.W. Pittman were given notice of violation to repair, demolish the structure at 1813 Mockingbird Lane. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 7, Section 13-154, Designations 8, 13, and 15 of the City of Dennison Code of Ordinances. Co-compliance issued this property minimum property standards notices as well to the listed owner in October of 2020. We haven't had no contact with these owners as well. The structure was posted unsafe on June 16th, 2021. The appraised value of the improvement for 2021 is $16,787. The taxes currently unpaid total $1,512.41 and have not been paid in full since 2018. There has been no water service at the structure since January 9th, 2018. So there really is a house behind all that vegetation there that you can't see. But the structure is totally not weathered tight. There's big holes in the roof. The interior of the house is damaged extensively. It's open for people to come in and out of. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property on file in the Neighborhood Services Office. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 1813 Mockingbird Lane nuisance and unsafe to order demolition to authorize staff to proceed with demolition process. Second?
There is a motion by Councilmember Courtwright and a second by Mayor Prokhem Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance amending Section 28.26, Section 28.33, Section 28.46, Section 28.49, and Section 28.63 of Chapter 28, the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, case number 2021-064ZO. Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As referenced in the agenda caption, staff is bringing forward tonight multiple recommendations and amendments to our zoning ordinance. As noted in the comprehensive plan, it states directly that zoning and development regulations should be reevaluated on a regular basis. As noted in the staff report, we adopted the zoning ordinance in 2009. There's been some amendments throughout that period since then, but we've really never had an opportunity to really take a holistic approach at the ordinance in relation to where the market trends are today, how our neighborhoods have developed, and where do we want to go forward to try to advance the purpose of the comprehensive plan. Really, I'll run through the high points in this. You had the staff report. You had the recommendations in front of you. But basically, one of the two main districts that we have proposed to be amended in entirety are the single-family townhome district and the office district. The single-family townhome district is intended to really encourage attached units that are for sale product, not a mandatory for-sale product, but really encourage that you'd have that narrow product that would be attached to two, three, four, or five other products that you could individually sell each one. As the ordinance written today, it really doesn't allow for that. The standards are not typical of the townhome product that's seen in the North Texas area. So the staff has proposed a fairly major rewrite of that ordinance to be typical of what you see of townhouses in the North Texas area. The office district is a district that we are recommending to remove residential uses. And the original goal, I think, was a lofty goal in that it wanted to envision a mixed-use district where you'd have a live-work environment, and that is a great goal to have. Unfortunately, I think where Dennison is today, I think you're going to continue to see the separation of those uses outside of the downtown area, which I think the downtown historic district has been a great success story. As written today, however, the office district would allow single-family duplex, multifamily uses by right without any discretion or review by the Planning, Zoning Commission, the City Council. Traditionally, when you do those type of mixed-use districts, they come in a planned development district. If you look at most of the, what I call the urban mixed-use districts, if they're not in an historical district as such in Dennison, they're done through a planned development district. So staff felt that it would be better that we take the residential uses out of the office district. If somebody wants to propose a true mixed-use, live-work district, they come back before the Planning, Zoning Commission and the City Council with the planned development district to have you have the discretion. Otherwise, you have no say in far as the density or the location of these residential uses in an office zone district. In the highway overlay district, as you know, the city has adopted multiple overlay districts to protect various corridors in town. Our highway overlay and oriented district was intended to go have further protections. We know that that's our economic development generator, both present and the future, of what we can expect to bring high taxable value. Staff recommended that the permitted, excuse me, the list of prohibited uses be expanded upon, that there be uses that we would recommend that would not be permitted by right in the highway overlay district. We had recommended some various automobile and boat and those type of uses be restricted and allow them to come in again through the PD process. Through testimony received at the Planning, Zoning Commission, the PNC recommended that those automobile uses be allowed by right. So the ordinance tonight still continues to allow those automobile-oriented uses to be allowed by right in the highway overlay district. We went through and analyzed a use chart, went through and discovered where there are certain uses that are probably not appropriate in some districts and where uses that are not categorized today that would be appropriate in district. And then we updated the land use terms in there. There are several terms that really are not relevant or redundant. The word cafeteria, I doubt we'll really see, you know, cafeterias in the future. If we do, some come in, there are going to be a restaurant. As I pointed out in the staff report, we do not have a land use term for a data center. Those are significant economic development generators in the city, and we didn't have any type of a land use designation for theirs. So again, the land use chart really reflects a very scrutiny of where districts or where uses are certainly appropriate and not appropriate in the city. Then finally comes the housekeeping order. We went through the list of definitions. Again, amended the definitions to update them to current terms. There were some definitions that were obsolete, and some definitions that were not in there that would be appropriate in there. So with that, Mayor, you have a recommendation for approval from the Planning, Zoning Commission that met on this last week with the changes that I noted in the highway overlay district. With the city staff being the applicant, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll defer and let you have the public testimony.
Questions for Mr. Webb? There may be questions, Mr. Webb, as we begin our discussion. This is a public hearing, and I will identify each of you who have filled out a card. I'll ask you to come to the podium and identify yourself as well as give us your address. That is for the record, so that we have a record of who has spoken. I ask you to let the person who is speaking at the podium to do the speaking until you're called upon. And then those who did not fill out a card, you will also get the opportunity to speak after we have gone through these. So, all right. The first person is Lloyd Wright. Mr. Wright?
I'm just curious on this agenda here, my address is 820 West Star. I'm just curious, does this affect my address?
Okay, so you don't have specifics about what you're opposed to?
Oh, yes. I'm opposed to if they're going to come in and take my property, try, you know, try to buy my property out from under me. That's, I'm just...
Okay, so...
I'm just curious of how, what this, what this entitles.
Okay, so where in the ordinance do you, do you get this, the idea that, that we're going to, that we're going to come in and buy your property out from under you?
Um, I really don't understand all this. I was just told that that's what was attempting to happen.
Okay, well, that certainly is not the case. The whole intent of the ordinance is to, to, as Mr. Webb said, part of it is housekeeping, to clean up, to, to address, you know, a city changes.
Okay.
And as, and as we go through those changes, you have to address ordinances.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
And, and so there is no way, sir, that anything in this is going to allow us to come in and take your property away from you.
Okay.
That simply is not true.
Okay, well, I was just curious what I was, I just built this house like three years ago, and I was just curious of, okay, that's...
I think what the scary part might be is that if it's the office district, which maybe that's what you would be zoned as, is that we don't allow single-family uses there anymore or residences. But you, you would still be fine. And what we could always do is go back and change that partial correction. We could rezone that, because one thing that you inherited is a lot of spot zoning that's occurred over the years. And we could rezone that to single-family or residential and take care of that. Am I correct in that?
We have two options. We can initiate the rezoning, or the attorney's office, and we can further the grandfathering rights that it's not deemed as a non-conforming use.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's the scary part, but it's not, it doesn't take your property. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt your property the way we're opposed.
As, Mr. Wright, as long as you have, you have a single-family home, it continues to be your single-family home. It will continue to be your single-family home.
That's good enough.
Until you sell it and it becomes something else.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Peggy Holloway?
Mine was about the same as his.
Okay, so you do understand this Holloway, that this in no way allows anybody to take your, take your property, right? Okay, all right, great. Kimberly Wright?
Mine was the same thing. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to offend where I live at. So mine was the same thing.
No, ma'am.
Okay. We're all family. We all live here.
This is a, this is a, this is a planning process.
Got you. Okay. We just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to put us on the outskirts at the end of it. That's all we were...
No, ma'am.
All righty, thank you.
We love all of our citizens.
Well, thank you, Burge. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Dallas Hayden. Yes, sir? Would you identify yourself and your, and your address, please?
Yeah, my name is Dallas Hayden, 1204 West Walker.
Okay.
And I just want to comment, so I urge the city council to vote against 4C. It harms office district residents. The districts are too small for planned developments. Though I believe the minimum is a three-acre requirement. Grandfathering does often impact values. These people, it kind of is a taking. It'll take away their home values, potentially, potentially. The other thing is that with the change in the light industrial district, may allow things like CBD oil shops, gun shops, discount shops near historic St. Paul Baptist Church, Alpha and Omega, God's House of Faith and Worship, because it's allowing pretty much all generic retail within the light industrial district. No individual notice went out to citizens, I believe. So my recommendation is to allow citizens to get involved first and take this back to the drawing board and just take some time to rethink it, because in many cases, it's apparently not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So again, although it's not physically taking people's homes, it may really hurt their home value. I talked with a bunch of people who live in those office districts, and they're, again, these are small properties. They're disparate properties. They used to be a dentist office or something, and they were converted into a home. And with the grandfathering is not the same as by right allowance. So respectfully, I just request that the city council vote against this, vote against this item, just to take it back to the drawing board. So some of these issues can be ironed out.
John, do you want to address any of that?
The issue brought up about allowing retail uses in the light industrial district. First of all, we felt that that was an issue that would actually be a bonus to many, many property owners today, given that the light industrial district is fairly restrictive. These districts are on major and minor thoroughfares. They're capable of accommodating additional retail traffic. The major retail generators that you would see from a shopping center or a big-box operation, they're going to be on the highways. They're going to be on the high-visibility corridors. So I think the issue of introducing retail in the light industrial is not against the comprehensive plan. The plan recognizes that we change over time, and we felt that this was actually a bonus that we could give property owners today, that they're fairly limited in how they market their property in the light industrial. This would allow for an opportunity to somebody to maybe have some type of light manufacturing in the back of the property. And if they want the front half to sell those goods, it would allow that to happen. So we didn't see any negative impacts from having, and that's fairly common in Texas cities in the hierarchy of commercial zoning to allow retail, office, and other uses in the light industrial district. In regard to no longer allowing new residential uses in an office district, is correct. Any house would be grandfathered. In my 40 years, I've never had a title company call me and have a concern of a house sale when there's a non-conforming use. When we point out the part in the ordinance, how it's grandfathered, that should accommodate them. But I'm open to suggestions. I'm open to, there are some cities that, where there's existing single-family homes, regardless of the zoning on the property, that they're not deemed non-conforming. And I would like to maybe work with our city attorney's office if we can strengthen our non-conforming language to add further protection to existing homes in office district.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes, sir. Would you identify yourself and your address, please?
My name is Tommy J. Russian. I live at 827 West Baker. I've been living there for over 30 years. I am homesteading. I don't plan on selling my house. I'm over 60 years old. I'm in my 60s, and that's where I'm going to stay. And another thing I'd like to know is what kind of demands is going to be required for the rezoning of the area? For one thing, I'd like to ask the city, why has not the flood control been handled down there?
Is there anybody that wants to answer that question? Because I'm not. But, but sir, before Mr. Webb comes up, this zoning does not impact your homestead in any way. The zoning changes that are being recommended are to create appropriate uses throughout our city. That does not impact things that are currently existing. Your homestead is not going to be impacted in any way whatsoever. It will only mean that the things that can be built near you will be more appropriate for your single-family home and your homestead.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that, but there's another issue here. There is a lot of vacant land around me. I have had a lot of these developers come to me, wanting me to say, hey, who owns this? Who owns that? This and that. Well, the 700 block from Florence all the way to Du Bois is a flood zone. Okay, I'm the only house on the 800 block of Baker. Okay, everything else is a creek in the main sewer lines. There is really nothing that can be developed there from what I understand. And what I'm seeing is all the new homes and everything that's being built there is putting more water down there on me. I have a creek that runs east and west. One runs north and south. They meet on the back of my property. And the more water that is coming off these new houses and stuff that y'all are building on the hills and everything, even this year, you know, we've had quite a bit of rain. I've had the water clean up my backyard where the creeks have come out. Father's Day several years ago, I was floating a canoe in my backyard, and I can show you on Facebook where I walked in water this deep in my backyard to unhook a walker hound that was on top of the doghouse. So, you know, what I'm saying is what is to be built in that area when it's in a flood zone?
John, I suspect if it's a flood zone, there's nothing going to be built there.
I think one big part of this, though, is we're not changing your property to office zoning. Your property already is office zoned. This will help protect you from encroachment, from, like, if someone wanted to build on that lot, say they're able to figure out a way, right now they could build a whole lot of things that you might not be happy with. And I'm with you, because my house is in an office district. The house next to me is, and then there's a parking lot. Well, on that parking lot, they could build apartments or a, what is it? Is it a three-story building is what it allows right now? This would further protect that little zone or your little zone from these incompatible uses. So it's not that we're changing you. You already are office district. That, somewhere back in the day, someone, someone made us office district. And so that's kind of what we're dealing with, is trying to fix that.
Well, the flood zone is still there, so how are you going to fix that?
And that's something that we have to get with our public works crew.
And, and the zoning won't change that. It won't change that. It'll still be a flood zone.
Well, there should be a, there should be a, there should be a limit to what you are allowed to build in a flood zone. Okay, the more you build there, the more water you put in on me. Okay, right now I got 10 on my house, this stall around it. I'm on pier and beam. Now it comes to the back of my house. The more water that I get, sooner or later, it's going to come in my house.
I think he actually pointed out one of the things that we want to be able to have review is by, today, by allowing single-family or multifamily by right in the office district that really limits our ability to look at that. They could come in and play it today. But the flood zone is a separate issue. He's correct. His property, the majority of his property is in the flood zone. I don't believe he's met with our public works director. Would love to have the opportunity to have him come in and sit down with Kerry and I one-on-one and talk to him about the process, because there is a process that you go through for reclaiming flood zone. It's a fairly lengthy process, but we would like to sit down and maybe walk him through the process if our people were to develop around him what they would have to go through.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just went to the appraisal office not a month or so ago, and they have it on the appraisal that... and they have it on the appraisal, that, that is a flood zone.
Yes, sir.
So it's already on record.
Yes, sir.
And as far as the city, me calling people and talking to people and showing them, I have. I've showed them washed out old sewer pipes in the creek where the water has washed them out. Okay? You have your new city main on the other side of the creek. Okay? This is old pipe that's coming out of there and it's transite pipe. So all I can say is until something is done about the water control up there, because I'm getting it off of Henry Scott Middle School. I'm getting it off of, all the way up there on ninety-one. I mean, it all comes right down through there, runs to Ironore. Ironore runs into Choctaw, Choctaw runs in the Red River. When the Red River is up and they got the floodgates on, Choctaw in running, all the water backs up.
And, and I, and I understand that, sir, but this ordinance is not going to change any of that. It's not going to have any impact whatsoever. That's a separate issue. Carrie, would, would you stand up? This is Carrie Jones. She is the public works director. Carrie, would you, would you get with this gentleman after the meeting is over and see if you can help him with his issues?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Please identify you yourself, your name and address.
Jonathan Earnhardt, one ten South Houston Avenue. Well, I agree with the office district. Obviously, there's a lot can be shoved in there real quick, but I just wanted to make a note that nobody caught the, when you do have a house appraised, when you're selling it, just like we had to come through here on a hearing on five twenty Houston. If it is out and the appraiser puts down that it's not zoned correctly, they will not close on the property and you do have to rezon the property. So it might be something for the city considered, that the houses that are on there, that you do a self-initiative to change those to the proper zoning, because it will block. A deal and could cost you a few months on a house you're selling. You know, it was just noticed probably a week before closing. We were unable to close and had to come here and rezon that property. Now it's five twenty Houston, because it was commercial. They said it was non-conforming and would not, the lender would not close that property. But mainly, I came up to speak about the highway overlay district. Obviously, this planning and zoning went over a lot of the things that were in there, the car dealerships and the boat dealerships and stuff like that. This also isn't just the highways, the corridor districts. And we own property on the highway and the corridors. So some of our concerns are the things that are being blocked, especially you can't do a planned development on bigger than two, anything smaller than two acres. Our property is right at that, but if we replat it, we're going to lose part of that, be less than two acres. It doesn't allow for anything that's listed under light industrial or I can't remember the other wording, but the last part in the zoning district and which would be included us. So we wouldn't be allowed to build our own new office that we haven't built yet on our property on the corner of five oh three. It's kind of a broad thing, so I think there should be some way to at least, on the smaller portions, be able to get people in there, because these are, there's not three acre plots all down Morton Street. There's not that on, there might be quite a bit on five oh three, but not quite as many in them one twenty and stuff like that. I think there should be a way that those can be applied or put in under a CUP or something like that. I know we'd like more control over that, but I think we need an option when we can't, when someone needs to go there and we want them there or not. You know, this is definitely make it hard for us if we can't have even an option, because we don't have enough acreage there or split it off and subdivided and stuff like that, which we do. So I just want to consider a lot of those uses to be reconsidered in there for sure and really take into what planning and zoning said and take, let the car dealerships and the boat dealers and everything. I know we, they didn't even cross out RV, but I think that, that's your only choices for an RV dealership. You're not going to have anywhere else they can go. So in essence, you're blocking an RV dealership from going here. There's not a bunch of room that you can put them on Armstrong Avenue or Woodline. You're not going to get a RV dealership. So those are the, the couple of concerns I had, otherwise it looked pretty good to me. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Come to the microphone, please.
He mentioned RVs and I just wanted to mention that one change, one proposed change to light industrial district actually is turning RV camps or like short-stay RV parks to a condition, like a conditional use permit use, so it's no longer by right. But, I mean, Dennison to me, I, I just think the lake, you know? Love getting out, going outside, you know, Juniper Point, that type of thing. I was out of the city, but I just think that, you know, I, I think that should remain by right use. And I also don't think there have been a lot of density problems with the office district in terms of residential construction so far. But anyway, just, you know, two more comments.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on this, on behalf of this agenda item? If there being none, the, the public hearing is closed. I will just say that, that this, this zoning, these zoning changes were initiated by council. We have, we have asked, when Mr. Webb came on, to look at, at our, our zoning so that we do have appropriateness throughout our city and we have the highest and best use of the, the land that we have in our city. I, for one, have, have an issue with the, with the highway overlay district with four, four categories that remained by right. I, I can't, I was driving from the airport about two o'clock this morning and all I saw for miles and miles and miles were headlights with, with awnings over them, where there were car lots. And I don't know about anybody else, but I do not want that in Dennison, Texas. And so I can't, I just can't support car dealerships by right. I can't do that. I, I think there are ways to allow that and to control it. And I, and I, me personally, I think we need to go back to the planning and zoning and have a, have a work session with them. I don't think they understand that there are ways that a car dealership could, could be, could go through a planned development district, submit a plan and they could be allowed, but not by right. I just can't, I personally cannot support that. So I think that, that we should, we should go back to, specifically, I'm talking specifically about the highway overlay district. That's what I'm specifically talking about in that, that we need to get some more clarity and some, some coordination with the planning and zoning and, and the desires of the council, so.
Well, and mayor, if we're, if we're going to take that step, I also think we can obviously, you know, revisit increased comfort level for the entire council in the office district as well as the changes to light industrial. It wouldn't, we can definitely incorporate that in our conversation, get a piece about that.
I agree. I think a lot of the changes are beautifully done. I really do. I think we addressed a lot of things that were in there that were not appropriate or redundant. And I think a lot of the new definitions are great, because you're right, Louie's is not knocking on our door to put a cafeteria in. But I do think now that we've heard a little bit and we know a little bit more, a little more knowledge is always a good thing. I don't think there's any, we're not in a rush to approve something.
Well, and, and also, you know, for Mr. Webb, for our planning zoning folks that put a lot of effort into this, because they've put many, many hours into this. This is not to take anything away from that effort. It's just to answer a few specific questions and then, you know, like I say, this is a big change, so let's take our time and, and if it goes to the next meeting, hopefully, Mr. Webb will, you know, we can find some time to meet between now and then or the following. But I'm supportive of that for sure.
I, I think that this is going to be something that's going to support us for years going forward. And, and I think that we need to be sure that we make the, the right decisions to support that and that, that if we, if we put something in place, it is actually going to give us the ability to end up with what we want in our community and not what just happens. And, and so, John, we, we appreciate, we appreciate all the work that you've done. And, and as Councilmember Spiegel said, this is not to take away from the work that you've done. This is to, to, to get us to the point where, where we feel like maybe it does enough. And, 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 you know, I'm not sure, this is just me speaking. I'm not sure that we need to have anything by right on the, on the, on the highway overlay district. That, this is our last opportunity to get it right. There are some places we can't get it right, because it's already gone wrong, but we can get it right here, so.
And mayor, last thing, to our citizens that did show up tonight and speak on this. I know several of you put a lot of time and effort into this, some really good communication with staff, with council prior to the meeting, so I want to thank you for that. Thank you for taking the time.
Yes. Thank you all for coming. We, we appreciate and want our citizens to come out and tell us, you know, what, what you feel. And, and I am, I am very sorry that those of you who felt like that you were being negatively impacted. I just want you to, I'm glad that you came so that you got that clarified, so that you know that that in no way is, is going to negatively impact you. So I would, I would like to see this on our next council agenda, on the first, first meeting in September.
Do we need a motion on that?
We need a motion.
Mayor, I move to table four C on this agenda.
I'll second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. We can. If I can just get to my, to my calendar.
September seventh.
September seventh is right. So can, does he need to amend his motion or? Okay, could you amend your?
Does that give you enough time, Mr. Webb? Or should we, do you need to be, I mean, I want to make sure you can get with your, your group, too.
My preference would be that we have enough time for everyone.
To get enough information, I think I'm going to push you down to the last meeting in September.
Okay. All right.
It is the last.
And that will be September the twentieth.
Move to table until at least September twenty.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item four D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on our request to abandon a part of the Holland Drive right-of-way, case number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight eight R O W. Mr. Webb?
Thank you, mayor. As reference to the agenda, this is a request to abandon a very small piece of property. It's an unused portion of Holland Road. I've shown it on the larger aerial and zooming in gives you an idea of the piece of property. It's, it's zone residential. Purpose of this is that we have a developer wishing to put in a nineteen lot, single-family subdivision. Part of the development would incorporate this part of the Holland right-of-way. It's a, unneeded for future extension. We do not need it for utilities. We've actually already reviewed the plans for this plat. So with that, we recommend approval of abandonment of this right-of-way. Be glad to answer any questions.
John, this Miller Street, is that, is that going to be a street that they're going to create?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That's part of the development.
So I ended up looking at it, it looked like it was just a dead end. And I thought it might go all the way to that following street, I forget what the name of it is.
No, sir. It's, it's part of the Miller Street right-of-way is out there today, so they would extend it and then continue to extend it into a cul-de-sac on, on the east end for a turnaround.
So Miller Street would be a new street for them?
It'll be an extended street, a new, a new street.
Does the developer have any plans or do we, on how we'll, we'll end Holland Drive? I realize right now it's probably just dead ends and goes into a field. I would, I would hate for someone to drive into someone's backyard. Are they addressing that or is that something we're going to address?
If we need to put up other type of bollards or some type of device, we can do that on our public right-of-way. Right now, it'll just, it'll dead end to the back end of the property. The reason we don't feel is a problem is just a very short stub from Holiday Street, so it's not a long dead end. But we can address that.
Any further questions for Mr. Webb? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the request for abandonment of part of the Holland Drive right-of-way.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Abstain. Abstain.
Oh, let the record show that, that Councilmember Crowley abstained. Item five A, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on adoption of the Main Street Department's long-range planning document for downtown Dennison through twenty thirty, titled Vision Forward. Ms. Dow.
Thank you, mayor and council members. It's very good to be with you tonight and to be able to talk about our favorite subject, downtown Dennison. We have had a long-range planning document for as far back as I know, in the late nineteen eighties, when the Main Street Department was formed. We came with goals and objectives and some of those might look a lot like the ones you see us presenting today. A lot of the things don't really change that much, but, you know, we try to adapt with it and, and follow the, the trends in, in the current environment. So the initial plan was developed in nineteen eighty-nine. I know when I was hired in two thousand and ten, one of my first questions, when I was looking at what we would begin to look at, was do you have a long-range planning document? And fortunately, the answer was yes, and it had been recently developed. And so we did another one, the Vision twenty twenty we did in twenty fourteen. And I worked with interns in the Main Street office and did that one in-house. And I was very pleased with it. I feel like the results that were, that come from that were, you know, amazing. And that's because we have great people, great buildings and great businesses to work with downtown. And a lot of people care deeply about our downtown and that's why it's so easy to get a public input into the, the plans that we develop. It's, it's not something that I have all this great knowledge and, and even our board, we don't stop at, at the variety of knowledge that they bring to the table. It's something that we try to seek out widespread input so we can get the best for our downtown and moving forward. And the pandemic didn't work with us this time. And we're accustomed, when we do public meetings for downtown, we're accustomed to seeing anywhere ninety, a hundred people and don't take that for granted. But we, we had our work cut out for us. And so doing this in-house, again, we decided that the only way we could accomplish this was to do a survey. And I much prefer face-to-face and, and, you know, good feedback in the public input, but we didn't have that choice. And so we worked with that and the results, I think, were astounding. The, it, the survey went December first through January thirteenth of this last, this year. We had five hundred and forty-two participants in that survey and they spent an average of forty-seven minutes and thirty-three seconds. And I don't know about you, but it's hard to take that much time out of my day to devote to any one thing. And so I'm, I'm just really impressed that so many did that and I feel like it gives us just tremendous input. The, the next, oh, I'm supposed to be, somebody's helping me out over there, as they often do. Thank you. I was just going on, I could have made it to the end, probably, and never known that y'all were doing that. So this slide, I put it all in one to show you who completed this survey. So the graph on the left is two hundred and eighty-eight, the, the tall- So the graph on the left is two hundred and eighty-eight, the, the taller, um, column there. And that's Dennison residents outside downtown, but within the city limits. And I'm always, uh, you know, when we have events, it's nice to see tourists that come in and, and things like that. But I'm always, um, pleased when we're surveying our Dennison residents. And I believe that we heard their voice on this. Um, downtown Dennison, uh, residents, we have fifty-five of those. And then we had a good, um, a good number also, a hundred and thirty-four from Grayson County that were outside Dennison. So I believe that that, that also enhances what we heard. And then we had people from Oklahoma, from the Metroplex, and it was nice to get that input as well. On the right-hand side is something that I'm, uh, really pleased with also is the age groups. And so you can see that nineteen and under, we had a good number of those. It dipped a little bit for twenty to twenty-nine, but all the rest, um, up through sixty-nine, we really, um, had good response from those age groups. And, and we worked hard at it. Um, that's detailed in your, um, packet there, and I won't go into that. But the, the group that worked on this, I would like to recognize them because it was, um, like I said, we did it in-house. And so it took a lot of time and a lot of effort. And I feel like we had a rock star group because, um, it was very impressive. I, I got to participate in the process and sometimes I'd just sit back and was just amazed at the, um, the people that, and the knowledge that they had. But, um, Rachel Reinert, uh, put a lot of the packet together in, that, that you see in your, um, your packet. And then Melanie Truxell was involved on the front end when we put the questions together. And they were both in my office. Um, Nisha Musico, these are board members of the Main Street Advisory Board. Nisha Musico, um, Elsie Russell, Randy Sadlachek, William Myers with Dennison Development Alliance. And then, uh, our council member Pro Tim, Brian Hander was, was also involved. And, um, very pleased to have all their, um, different perspectives. And one thing that this does is, um, transcends different people. It, it transcends our council. So when, um, you know, someone may turn out and we have a new council member, it gives them something to look at right off and they can see what we're looking to accomplish in our downtown. Same with our city manager. I'm sure he's probably already read this in his first day on the job.
He did.
Awesome. And then, um, you know, Main Street directors, um, we, we have a document that can be handed off and someone could take up, uh, as well as our Main Street Advisory Board. This slide shows the different, um, words that were mentioned. So William Myers, I, I think, and Randy Sadlachek came up with this. And we are focused on what we heard from the different answers to the survey questions. And they thought, okay, let's look overall and look at what, what words were mentioned by the people completing the surveys. No matter what question was asked, what did they hear? And of course you hear music and, and besides downtown, music was number one. Um, parks is important. So my friends in the parks department will, um, you know, of course, get a copy of this. There's some things, Public Works, uh, the police department. A lot of the departments can, um, help and, and do on a daily basis, make downtown safe. But it's, um, you know, just a, a lot of different words. They, people like their dogs because we have such, um, a good number of residents downtown. And so they enjoy having their pets and like for a dog park. So there's things that, that you'll hear on this that, um, that document mentioned. So let's get to the top ten goals. Um, number one, and, and our board took these and ranked them. And so, um, we, we came up with the top three that we will focus the most of our attention on, um, not leaving out the, the other seven. The first one is designing downtown Dennison. And so, you know, we had discussion on this. Um, I think our mayor might have, might have had some input on this as well, but we're already doing that. So why does it need to be up here? Can't we just check that off the list? But no, it can't be because we want to make sure that we finish. And we want to make sure that we take care of our downtown businesses and residents as we're going along. Because that's, that's how we can stand out and, um, stand above other communities by supporting our businesses and residents as we're doing this. Then number two is increase our occupancy. And you would have seen this on the Vision twenty twenty, and we did increase our occupancy. But this also mentions loft residence because we not only want to have a strong business environment with all our, um, buildings filled, we want to have more loft residents in downtown because that helps with, with the overall economy. And then number three, because we have so many loft residents and because a lot of people like to spend time downtown, we need to create a healthy, clean and safe environment. On number four, uh, we want to adopt a signature. Right now we have Dennison Live, and that is where we have all our, our events. And if you want to know what's to do in downtown, you can look there. But we also have Dennison Main Street, and that evolved over a period of time. But we need to take a look from the outside and see what, um, you know, what our best identity is. And then number five, create an engaging environment, uh, that meets everyone's needs. Um, engaging being the key word there. That's somewhat like number three, but engaging. Um, what we heard from the survey is a lot of people want active. They want activities. They can do activities for the whole family of all ages. And then number six, um, maintain the National Register District. We're very proud of that. That has, uh, been around since the eighties. And something that I just learned recently was it was established because they were concerned that we might lose the Katie Depot. And so isn't, isn't it wonderful that we have a developer working on preserving the Katie Depot right now? And then number seven, um, you know, refers to the music and the arts. Number eight, we want to maintain the relevance of downtown. And this was on our previous, um, survey or previous document in Vision twenty twenty. We, we know that there's going to be development in other parts of our community, and we're supportive of that. But we want to make sure that downtown is relevant in the whole overall scene. Like we still have our football stadium. We still have our post office and, and things like that. So we want to maintain the relevance. Number nine is identify and evaluate, um, areas to better utilize our spaces. And this is both in the downtown and the approaches. And then number ten is encourage additional diversity. And that's whether we're talking music, ages, cultural, ethnicity, everything that we do. We want to, uh, bring a good, um, you know, a good variety of our citizens together. And so I will be glad to answer any questions or to sit down. Thank you for, um, this. And I, I do just want to, um, conclude by saying that we are serious about wanting council's support of this because if there's something that you have a question about, we want to, uh, make it the best document that we can in order to, um, continue to, you know, chart our path for the next ten years.
Questions for Donna?
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah.
Uh, this, this document's really interesting because the board and the Main Street Director and everyone, they refer to this the whole time. This is something that, the last document, um, one of its priorities was to try to get a streetscape that might help us get, um, a couple of trees or something downtown. And look at what we're getting now. Like it's, it, dreams come out of this thing. So it's a, it's a really cool document. It's a really, really well-done and it covers a lot. But this, but the board's ready to do a lot, so it's a good thing.
Well, Donna, we just, we, we can't be thankful enough for, for all of your efforts in guiding the, the, the creation of this document. There's been a lot of work that's gone into it. And, um, and it's a, it's a living document. It, you know, it, it's, it's going to, it's going to last for the next, until you accomplish it all, I guess, Donna.
That's right.
So, so.
A comment. Um, I just want to thank you all for the professionalism and the way this was presented. It's on the city website. I've had a chance to share it with the people from out of town more than once. Uh, I just appreciate all that y'all done and the way it's professionally presented. And it really puts a nice, uh, face on our community, knowing, uh, that we have the plans, uh, that we know what we want. And I think that's very important to serious investors who are looking at, at our community. So thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you for articulating that because I hear that a lot. Um, you know, when we have our vision, we are serious about it and, and it's great to have people to share that, um, on our behalf.
Our commitment to the heart of our city makes a difference.
Absolutely.
It makes a difference. So, alright, um, well.
Mayor, I.
Are you, are you, you're ready to, you're ready, okay, okay.
I, I am, I am pleased to, to make a motion to approve the adoption of Main Street Department's long-range planning document for downtown Dennison through twenty thirty titled Vision Forward.
Second. There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Court Rye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Donna, thank you so much. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion and receive direction from council on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. Ms. Wagner.
Yes, Mayor. I'm not, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm going to pull this down just a little bit. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Um, this evening, I'm bringing to you, um, a proposed budget. It is a balanced budget for both the general fund and the utility fund. And I'm going to kind of go over that in a little brevity, but, um, a little more detail than you've had in, um, meetings past. Um, I believe you're aware of everything we're trying to put into the budget, but I just wanted to make sure that we brought this to you tonight before we present the final budget on September seventh for adoption. We're going to discuss the property tax rate information this evening, general fund, utility fund, budget recommendations and capital funds and the next steps. You'll notice I put in your place the notice that will go out in the newspaper, um, on Wednesday. Enter your seat there. You'll notice that the current tax rate is point six five two zero three four. The no new revenue tax rate is point six four seven zero three seven. And your no new revenue rate means that's the same rate you would need to implement to bring in the same amount of taxes as you did the previous year. The voter approval tax rate is point seven four five three eight four, and this is the rate that you could go up to before you have an election. Our proposed rate is the point six five two zero three four, the same rate that we currently have, um, within the city. Twenty twenty-one proposed tax rates for this next twenty twenty-two fiscal year, um, is stated there. You have the proposed tax for the city of Dennison, the current tax rate, the no new revenue, the voter. And then there's some other cities, surrounding cities, um, there and, um, comparative cities there that you can see. Total tax bill, this is based on, um, an average taxable value per the twenty twenty-one certified totals of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six thirty-seven. So it shows you the current tax rate for Dennison, D I S D, the county and Grayson College in your total tax bill. If your proposed, if your taxable value did not go up from last year and it was still the one thirty-nine, six thirty-seven, this would be your proposed rate, uh, for this next year for Dennison, D I S D, County and Grayson. The next couple of slides will show you the difference between those. So your home value, if, or again, if it remained the same, it would go down a hundred and two dollars and sixty-five cents. And then you see there the values for a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred thousand. This slide shows you the difference, um, within each one of those entities, Dennison, D I S D County and Grayson College and the difference total. Any questions? Uh, rundown for the general fund. We see these every, um, meeting. Original fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, this is what we originally brought to council last year and that was approved in September of twenty twenty. And the estimated, um, budget, uh, we had anticipated fifty-four days of reserve. This is, um, not counting our CARES Act reimbursement because, you know, we try not to count it before we get it. And so we anticipate being at sixty-eight days at the end of this fiscal year. Projected budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, uh, we're projecting a balanced budget and ending the year at sixty-eight days as well. Utility fund, original budget, we had anticipated ending at seventy-five days when this was adopted last year. Estimated budget at, ended at sixty-seven days. And we've talked about the difference in that is the winter storm event. We anticipate reimbursement from FEMA for next year, but we won't receive it until next year. But the proposed budget or projected budget for fiscal year twenty-two, um, is anticipating seventy-five days of reserve, originally what we had planned on being at the end of this year for. Budget recommendations. So this is the personnel side of it. We're recommending a one percent, one-time payment in October of this year, twenty twenty-one for all current full-time staff with six months of employment as of nine thirty twenty twenty-one. Other full-time staff employed as of nine thirty twenty twenty-one would receive a one percent, one-time payment once they reach their six-month anniversary. We have market adjustments, um, that we are going to build into the budget for qualified staff with an overall average of six percent. There are two percent increases on annual anniversary date for non-civil service and step increases for civil service as required. New full-time positions that we would like to add to the, um, budget for fiscal year twenty-two, there are eleven of them. Three of those are in streets, one in refuse, three in police, one in lab and three in utilities. New part-time positions include, um, parks and cemeteries. And then we have a few grade assignments and title changes for some positions. Any questions on the personnel?
You might note, Renee, that that three in streets is an entire.
Crew.
Crew.
Mm-hmm. And utilities the same as well. It's a new crew. So we can take care of our streets and our utilities as we grow, for sure.
Anything else?
Budget recommendations. Um, we have talked about our expenses, how, uh, we asked our, uh, staff to reduce our expenses five to ten percent. And so we are trying to get those line items back up to, um, prior to, um, to pre-COVID levels. We are re, trying to restore the days of reserve in general fund and utility fund, as you saw in the previous pages. Capital. Um, we anticipate, um, water and sewer infrastructure capital of spending one point five million. And this comes from the federal relief funds, the, um, American Rescue Plan. We have set those aside in a separate fund, and so we will expense those out of this separate fund. Um, the next would be public health and public safety capital for two point nine million. And then the projects are the water sewer street projects that I brought to you back in July that we would like to do in the amount of a little over two million dollars. That's the eleven hundred to fourteen hundred blocks of South Seventh Avenue, um, seven hundred East Bullock, seven hundred East Hall, two hundred M L K and seventeen hundred West Johnson. So our next steps, um, adopt the resolution tonight, well, that'll be the next step here, um, shortly, um, to set the public hearing for the tax rate. And then on Wednesday, I will send out that notice that's sitting there next to you of public hearings. Um, that's on the tax rate that we're recommending to stay with the same current rate of point six five two zero three four. And then September seventh, we would have those public hearings and adopt the budget and then adopt the tax rate if council so chooses.
Questions? Questions for Ms. Wagner?
It's a great-looking budget. I think it's good that we're adding into that reserve because as it shows with the winter storm, we use it, we need it. And, uh, it's important that it stays up high so that we can show we're fiscally responsible. And I really like the personnel that we're adding. There are service personnel that are going to directly impact our, our citizens. And I think that, that's what we hear a lot of, a street crew, that's a huge thing.
That is what we hear a lot of.
I think it's very good. I appreciate all you did to, to look through a lot of different funding requests to come up with this, this budget.
So, uh, this does not require action, but it does recall, require direction, so, um.
Moving forward?
Or maybe moving forward, that's what I would say.
Okay. I, I appreciate so much, we appreciate. I, I appreciate so much, we appreciate so much, all that you've done to work on this. And we need to acknowledge Mr. Atterberry.
Yes.
Who has also played a huge role in, in the development of this budget. So Bobby, thank you for all that you, you did in developing this budget as well. And I think, I think that it does the things that we needed for it to do. I'm particularly excited about the bringing physicians to market rate because if, if we don't, if we don't remain competitive, we cannot keep good people and we certainly need those, so. All right.
Awesome, thank you.
Item C, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a resolution calling a public hearing to consider an increase in tax revenue.
Yes, Mayor, member of the council. The truth in taxation rules mandate a governmental unit publish the proposed tax rate and also hold one public hearing on a tax revenue increase. If the proposed rate exceeds the voter approval rate or the no new revenue rate, whichever is lower, the taxing unit's governing body must vote to place a proposal to adopt the rate on a future meeting agenda as an action item. There must be a recorded vote, a roll call vote, and we will do that this evening. The dates of the public hearing must be stated and notices must be published. The proposed tax rate again for the tax year 2021 is .652034. Notices will be posted August 18th, which is this Wednesday, and a public hearing will be held on September 7th. Adoption of the tax rate is set to be September 7th as well. Any questions? Staff recommends approving this resolution and calling for a public hearing to increase the tax revenue.
All right. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution calling a public hearing for an increase in tax revenue.
Second.
There is a motion by Count, of Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. This requires a, a roll call vote. Ms. Wallantine.
Does I call your name? If you'd please say yes or no. Mayor Pro Tim Hender?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilmember Doty?
Yes.
Councilmember Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spiegel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Renee.
Good job, Renee.
Thank you. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated, contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same. Sections 551.071. Confer with city attorney regarding Chapter 20 of the city's code ordinance. The time is 7:12 and the council is now in executive session.